Good Thursday evening, friends. I'm Joe Gillaway and along with my partner, Bill Bostic, we welcome you to this and that the podcast. Hi, Bill, how are you?
I'm here, Joe. I just arrived at the right time and fortunately got everything working. So that's, that's a blessing in and of itself.
Well, it's important that you're here. I'm glad to know that. I'm seeing that. I don't know if we're on the air, Bill.
It says end stream on my end and the clock is running.
I see the clock running, but I don't. Okay, there we are. We are on the air. Okay. Um, anyway, what episode is this, Bill?
Nineteen.
Absolutely. Very good. Episode nineteen.
I only knew that because I saw your post today on Facebook.
Okay, well, you're doing a little enough homework that you can. That's kind of your only job as far as the, as far as the opening segment goes. You have to let the people know what episode. So we're moving right along. I think we started in, in April, maybe episode nineteen. And let's thank our sponsors here. And we're going to use this as well. Our sponsors are Rickaboz Electric, American Legion, the Robert H. Hope Post 272 on Mountain Road, Be a Hero, Hire a Hero, and Team PA or Team Pennsylvania AAU Basketball. Thanks to those great local businesses for their continued support of this and that the podcast. How about upcoming, Bill?
Well, I know we have the folks from WKBO coming up at some point.
Yeah, they're next, this coming Wednesday now, six days from today. And am I excited about that one, Bill?
Yeah, just a little bit. You seem to know more of the personalities than I do. I know Neil Howard, you know, Tim Burns, who can't be with us, Slim Jim Buchanan.
I know some of them a little bit, kind of casually. I just talked to Carol Chrissy. I don't know. So you weren't around, I don't think. Do you remember these, these personalities?
I don't remember. I'm not. Yeah, I don't remember Carol Chrissy.
Carol Chrissy was the morning, she was the morning partner with Dan Steele for a while.
Okay, yeah, I don't, wasn't listening much in the morning. It was more, more afternoon, I think.
She called me yesterday and we talked for about a half hour and we had fun on the phone and she's looking forward to it. And I told her how excited I am because, you know, for me, and I mean this, WKBO, Music Radio WKBO was not just a great radio station. It was not just a bunch of great on air personalities. It was an institution for me and it meant so much to me growing up. I liked the music. I liked the personalities and it was fun and it was funny. And so anyway.
I meet with Neil Howard pretty much every day during the week at St. Thomas Rogers Coffee House. The other day he was talking about how the station at one point had a softball team.
Yeah.
They always had a game down in Stilton and he was talking about how serious the, the team was, you know, in Stilton.
They had a basketball team too. They'd come to your high school.
Okay.
And they'd play against the faculty, you know, the fact, I went to South Side and East Junior and Central Dolphin. So whenever they play at East High or Central Dolphin, my mother would take my sister and me and we would go and, and watch our favorite on air personalities play against these teachers. And it was such a blast, a lot of fun. Let me mention quickly, uh, the personalities, the DJs that will be joining us, Slim Jim Buchanan, scheduled to appear, they call this in the business, Bill.
We can call it whatever we want. We're not in the business.
Well, they're scheduled to appear. I don't want to promise anything. Slim Jim Buchanan, Dan Steele, John St. John, Rick Shockley, Carol Chrissy, Captain Dave Edwards, Neil Howard, Bill Truesdale, and Michelle LaFever. Bunch of heavy hitters there and they all seem to be doing well. Um, and then we are, I am sourcing, that's another industry term sourcing. I'm currently sourcing Dolphin County Vo-Tech Administrative Director Jason Civitello. In fact, we just, uh, we just scheduled him for a week from, two Wednesdays from now, the twenty seventh. So, um, there's a lot of, a lot of buzz over the last, I don't know how many years, but recently about, hey, look, everybody doesn't have to go to college. Um, and I believe that I, I want my grandson to go to college and, you know, no matter what he ends up doing. But, uh, if he doesn't and he chooses another path, uh, the classes at Dolphin County Vo-Tech are there to help people get a, you know, kind of a jump start on, on their adult lives and, and learn some trades. And, um, so anyway, it's exciting that, that we have Jason Civitello joining us. And, uh, we've kind of been working with Jeannie Webster. Um, she, she introduced me to him or introduced us to each other. And so he's booked, Bill. He's, he's now booked and we're going to kind of piggyback off of our, uh, our show tonight, which will be Central Dolphin School Board members and, and talk to another Central Dolphin School District person.
And I'm sourcing too. I just wrote it down to remind myself about.
Sourcing.
Dolphin County Commissioner Justin Douglas.
That's right. You are sourcing him. Yeah. How about our disclaimer, Bill? The views and opinions, are you ready? The views and opinions expressed on this show are those of the participants who voice them and do not necessarily reflect the positions held by this and that the podcast as an entity, Bill or myself or the sponsors who support the show. So.
Can I tell a little, a little story to happen to me today?
That's what we're here for. Yep.
Yeah, I, I got a call today from a Patriot News reporter. Of course, they were calling about the Lingustown's Roundabout in the square area.
I could have guessed that.
Yeah. So they, I, I called that in over a week ago and they finally got to it. This reporter, um, looked at the Facebook page. Her name is Dana Ray Reno. Okay. Uh, anyways, I actually was a little nervous doing this because I'm usually on the other end, you know, asking questions and all that. But yeah, that it was a little nerve wracking to actually do that. So that was an interesting experience.
That's good that when, when things are nerve wracking and you have a little bit of fear, you grow. You come out the other end having grown, you know, having worked through that. And that's cool. I like to hear that. So I guess the last thing, and, um, did we mention, I don't think we mentioned, this is the people's podcast, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, I'm still trying to get a grasp of that.
Yeah, you're not catching on. This is the people's podcast because we allow the viewers, the, um, the, I don't want to say taxpayers because that doesn't matter. The, uh, the members of the community that watch the show to participate.
Right.
If they, um, if they wish, and if they have any ideas as to topics we should address or people we should have on, we are all ears. We're open to that and we'd love for them to, to join us or recommend some topics and, and guests. And then the other reason is the people's podcast is we have a, a live, um, comments screen and I get to, as long as it's tasteful, I'm pretty good at getting to all of them, aren't I, Bill?
Yeah. Where's, where's Kirby? What's Kirby's last name? Lentz?
Lentz.
Yeah, where's Kirby?
He'll jump in and harass us. So anything before we bring our guests in, let me, let me just mention who our guests are. We are talking tonight to three members of the Central Dolphin School District. They're board, board of directors, right? Is that Bill? Do I get that right?
School board.
School board director, school board director. And they are Janelle Bingaman, Dave Dorneman, and Lauren Silvers. And we are excited. We spoke to three, a couple of months ago and three out of the nine. And this is the second three of the nine. And then hopefully we're going to get to, to all of them eventually, the, the last three. Eric, who did we speak to last time? Eric Epstein, Jeannie Fordy, Webster, and Mike Jacobs. Yeah, yeah. So, uh, whoever's left after tonight, that's who we'll try to get on next time. So, and, and you know what? I think one of the things that this board promised, um, those who elected them and those who didn't elect them, everybody, all the, community members who have a, have a say or have a, any, anything to do with Central Dolphin School District, but they promised transparency. And they promised that they'd get out in the community and, and kind of, uh, you know, kiss babies as it were, and you know, go to, go to. Go, you know.
I don't think any of these people have kissed babies.
I doubt very much they've kissed babies, but, uh, I, Bill, I think you know what I'm saying.
Yes, I do.
They are out and about, man. They're going to school buildings and they're spending time with teachers and kids and, and they want to know what's going on and what they can do to make things better. So anyway, anything going on with Lingustown Gazette and edgy local news that we need to know about?
Well, I guess the most, other than the, the square thing, that's not the roundabout issue that's still being played out. And hopefully we can get some action from Penn Dot would be that we started shifting gears and trying to get the, the business side of Lingustown Gazette setup, you know, right at the moment, I, I can't even take a donation if I wanted to. I don't have a checking account. And, uh, we're also trying to, um, track down a title sponsor for Lingustown Gazette and had a little interaction with Sheets today.
Good.
So we're making some progress bit by bit and.
Well, we'll do that one day at a time. Yeah, we'll all, we'll all team up on that one day at a time. And so anyway, let's, uh, let's bring our guests in here, Bill. I'm very excited. There's Lauren Silvers. Hi, Lauren. Dave Dorneman. No, no particular order here.
I like Dave's background.
And Janelle Bingaman. That's a great background for somebody that's in education, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And Lauren, Lauren, that's a nice background. It's homey, you know, looks comfortable and kind of Walton-ish, maybe modern Walton-ish.
I, I don't have a clear space in my house right now because I'm getting ready to send a kid away to college next year.
Okay, all right. We are, we are so much more concerned with, it's, it looks good and it sounds good, Janelle, and that's the most important thing.
Yep.
So, uh, I am going to kind of, Bill and I are both going to take part here. We're excited to have you guys. Thank you for joining us. And, uh, but you know, Bill, having had an extensive background in local politics and, um, particularly in school board politics, he's going to kind of take the reins. Bill, are you prepared to do that?
I am. I'm ready to go.
Okay, so, uh, we, we spoke just briefly last night, I think either by, by text or email. I can, I count that as speaking and I did send you a list of things that I thought would be good topics, but, uh, it's all you, buddy. Let's get started.
Okay, well, I think the first thing we need to do is get to know our guests a little bit. And, um, what I'd like, what I'd like you to do is just, we'll go around each of you will have a shot here to, to tell us, you know, why you got involved with the school board. Uh, that, that's a big one. I do know, I think I was talking to Eric Epstein and he indicated that coming into this fall's election, there's some, some slots for school board that are, are open. There's no one there, a few of them, I, I believe. So, you know, it's a position that there is no pay. It's true public service and it's always interesting to hear, how you got involved and why you got involved. And then let us know, you know, how long you've been on the board and what region you represent. And if you could describe that to geography as far as where that region's at in the, the school district.
And Bill, it seems to me like they each have some expertise. So maybe they can discuss what, what they bring to the board that maybe their cohorts don't have. And, and it's going to be kind of vice versa. They all have, uh, something that's of value to, to the board and to the people they serve.
Sure. Okay. So it's, uh, Lauren, are you the veteran here of this three?
I think I might be. I'm in my fifth year. Um, and this year will be my sixth year. Yeah. So I'm, I'm most of the way through my fifth year, uh, on the board. Um, I went on the board because I had three children go through CD, um, school district who are now adults. One's in medical school right now. Uh, two got master's degrees and live in, um, Tennessee. And they just got a very good education. Um, and they hit the ground running in college. They were able to, you know, finish in four years and stay on track. And I wanted to see that continue for our students in our community. That, that's a real value to me to have a great, uh, public education. And, um, I really wanted to do everything I could to come back and serve my community in that way, if I could give back. Um, my expertise, I work in, um, office management for a small healthcare, um, in a dental office. And then also, uh, do some social media management for some private clients. And so I bring, bring to the board kind of the personnel piece. I'm the chair of the Personnel Committee. Try to bring that human resources, um, niche to, to the whole, um, to that committee and, um, just try to spend some time really focusing on, um, I'm really excited about our new HR director, uh, things like that. I think we just made an incredible hire there and I, and I'm really excited, uh, for, for the future for CD.
Wonderful. Golf clap. We do golf claps every now and then around. You have to earn them though.
So why don't, why don't we move over to, uh, Janelle?
Region?
Oh, sorry, region two. I'm sorry.
Where is region two? Is that?
It is so, it is so tough to describe because.
I'm sitting in it.
That kind of cuts like on the, it's on the east side and the CD side, a little bit where the other two regions are predominantly one or the other. Region two has a little bit of both. So I have like kind of that area by Union Deposit, um, that kind of goes over, um, a little bit into almost close to Nice Road, in that direction. And then, um, a lot of Lingustown Forest Hills, that whole area, all the way up to there and all the way up to Middle Paxton. So it's kind of a wonky, it's a wonky line.
Are you, are you in the same region as Eric Epstein?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Yeah, well, go ahead, Janelle. Why don't you, we'll jump over to you and see what you have.
All right. So I am, um, representing region one, which is Swatera Township, Paxton and Penbrook. Um, this will be my, I'm finishing up my fourth year because I am up for reelection here in November. And I actually did not have anybody, do not have anybody running against me. And at the end of the election, um, there was going to be an open seat. So we do have somebody that was put, is going to be put on as a write-in.
Okay.
Who is also currently on the board, Michelle Hawes. Um, but nobody else chose to run over here. So, um.
And that's in, and that's in region one, this, the seat that she's going to fill?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so let's see. I also echo what Lauren said. I really chose to run and wanted to be on the board because of being a parent of two students, that are in the district. Actually, my oldest just graduated in June from CDE. He was the, I, I have to be the braggadocious mom right now. He was the valedictorian of the twenty twenty.
You have, you have to mention that.
And he received an, an absolutely amazing education from Central Dolphin School District that definitely has prepared him for his future. And, um, I also have a son that is actually going to be in 10th grade at Dolphin County Vo-Tech. So, um, and I'm, I also am the representative, um, from Central Dolphin, one of them that's on the board at Dolphin County Vo-Tech. So I'm on the Joint Operating Committee for there as well. Um, in my professional life, I am starting year twenty-two as, um, an educator in West Shore School District. Spent eighteen of them in the classroom in fifth grade and this will be my third year as a librarian. So I bring, I bring the education piece and the current education piece to the board. I often get asked, you know, about certain like, um, programs that we're introducing or, you know, things that, uh, technology purchases that might be taking place. I am the Chair of the Technology Committee. So, um, you know, we, we've been doing a lot with trying to decide whether or not we're going to stay, uh, one-to-one with devices for all of our, uh, middle school and high school kids. And, uh, the cost there is, is, is in some issue of concern. Um, but things like that, um, interest me. So that is what I bring to the table.
So currently, do all the, uh, high school kids and middle, middle school, uh, students have devices from the school district?
They do. They each receive a Chrome, they receive a Chromebook when they start sixth grade and then they, um, in order to get your diploma at graduation, you have to turn your Chromebook in.
Okay.
So, um, and it's, it, it has its, it's, it's pluses and it's, it's, you know, it's positives and it's negatives. Um, the biggest issue there is the upkeep cost and then them losing them and breaking them and.
Okay.
Pouring soda in them.
Starting it, starting them on fire because there's a TikTok challenge.
Oh my, wow.
That, that's a, that's a whole subject in and of itself there.
Yeah. Well, another qualified, uh, board member, golf clap. Thank you, Janelle.
So Dave, let's, let's wrap up with you as far as your background.
Okay, I'm, uh, I represent region one, which is like West Hanover, a little bit of Lower Paxton Township. Uh, I was appointed to the board in twenty twenty-three and then, uh, right away I had to run again. So I won election in twenty-three for a two-year term. Uh, I am on the ballot again, uh, for a four-year term coming up, but I am also unopposed, uh, going into that fall. I got into the school board as, so I have, uh, I have two younger sons, one's in middle school and one's in elementary school. And, you know, I saw a lot of things are going around the country of, you know, education. I wanted to make sure that, you know, not only they had that, but all the, the kids, you know, I did a lot of coaching when I was, uh, my, my sons were younger and, you know, I wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity. And, you know, I'm a big believer in not everybody's for college. And so some people are going to be, we'll attack different things. We want to give them basically the basics. So when they leave Central Dolphin, they can be really successful and, uh, be great citizens, uh, for this area. I've lived here for, for over twenty years, didn't grow up here, but, uh, it's become my home and, uh, I really want to make an impact. I was on the West, uh, West Hanover baseballs, uh, and softball's, uh, board. I was on my HOA board, which that could be a whole podcast about what that's like. But as I got in there, I said, hey, I really want to make an impact, especially as, as my, especially my older son, I did a lot of coaching with him. He plays lacrosse. And he's at a level where I'm not really able to, to coach at that level, um, because I didn't play lacrosse. So, you know, I wanted to spend some time and, and give back to the community doing that. Um, and in my personal life, I, um, I'm a Senior Vice President, uh, of a medical device company and a distributor. So I work with a lot of, uh, we work mostly patients with diabetes. And, uh, so I work with a lot of, you know, pediatrics, a lot of Medicare age patients, uh, people all across the country. So I have that business background and then I'm big into, I'm a big spreadsheet guy, as everybody in the board will know. And so I love, you know, data and analytics and modeling and AI and different things like that. So.
Now, what did you say? You're a big spike, what?
Uh, I'm a bit, uh, Excel.
Spreadsheet.
Spreadsheets. Okay, all right. Okay.
Something you and I are not, Bill.
Yeah.
Yep. So with that, I'm, I, uh, I'm the Chair of the Buildings and Ground Committee. And so I know we're going to talk a little bit about kind of capacity and things like that. So we're just kind of using data to try to make some good decisions and, uh, and solve some of the problems. At Central Dolphin, uh, we've grown twenty percent over the last ten years in population. At the same time, our poverty rate went from thirty-five percent to fifty-five percent. So we have a lot more kids. And they're coming in very, very quickly and faster than even the models that, that, uh, we have say. And, you know, we have less kind of tax revenue going in and get a lot of challenges with funding from the, you know, the federal government's a small portion. Most of it's local. But even the state, I mean, we still don't have a budget right now and it's really, really challenging to do budgeting and, and planning and trying to figure out how to get the students the resource they need and, and, you know, and our teachers and our families and everybody. At the same time, take care of obviously our taxpayers. Um, we're responsible for that.
Yeah. What did, well, you said about the poverty. I knew years ago when I was involved with the board that that would, would come up. But it was like, what were the percentages and the jump that, that's happened? You quoted them a little fast.
Yeah, I talked real fast. So.
Yeah, thirty-five to fifty-five, Bill.
Yeah.
You got to pay attention, buddy. All right. So twenty, increased twenty percent. That's, that's significant. Very significant.
Big. That's a big jump.
That's a game changer, you know?
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we have a lot of, you know, we have refugees and immigrants and coming in the community and, you know, we're welcoming them with open arms. And we got some great things coming like welcome centers and things like that. But as they come in, right, you know, they're just kind of getting started and, and getting their foot, you know, in this area. So it just, it takes a little bit of time. So for, for us, we've been dramatically underfunded. Um, and we actually were identified as one of the schools, as one of the most underfunded schools in Pennsylvania. So we did get some additional money, uh, last year, uh, in the budget. And so that, that is helping. But we've had over ten years of being underfunded by, you know, we, we estimated probably around fifty million dollars that we should have been getting that we're not. And so by not having those funds, it was really difficult to build that capacity of what was coming. So now they've kind of put us in a, in a tough situation, but we have a lot of different ideas and things we're doing to, to work around that. Cause we do have a great board. We have so many different backgrounds and, uh, while we don't all agree and, and on this podcast, we, you know, this is all our personal opinion. We all, at the end of the day, it's about our students, about our, our staff, it's about our community. So we figure out a way to get it done and do what's best for what the resources that we have today.
Thank you, Dave. Golf clap for Dave.
Yeah.
Can I make a quick correction? I'm so sorry. I am afraid that I might've said something. I am on the Personnel Committee, but I am not the Chair. I don't want to get Jeff Gordon mad. I'm the Chair of the Policy Committee. I think I was, I was speaking too fast. I just want to clarify that.
That's okay.
Doesn't get angry at me.
I don't think that Jeff would get angry with you. Thank you, Lauren. We appreciate that.
Before we jump into some issues, I have a curiosity I wanted to try and solve, get some insight from the three of you. When I was involved with the board, um, there was obviously a whole different slate of people there. And as a reporter, one of the things I always found curious was that every meeting, at least at that point in time, there was an executive session held before the meeting. I think they had dinner and that kind of thing. And then they would come out. And at the time, uh, Mr. Thompson was the chairman and he would just give a brief statement that, that basically saying that we met. And I formed a committee of, there's, of concerned citizens. And one of the things we worked on was, you know, open government and having, having him provide a little bit more information about what was discussed. But are, is, are those meetings still taking place that they, that every, every time? What, 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 is it mainly the, the staff sharing information with you? Is that the essence of what happens back there?
I would say some, some of what goes on is it's private personnel issues. So that's stuff we talk about in public meetings.
Right, right, right.
When you're talking about anything that's come up, uh, legal cases, um, tax appeals, things like that. So those are things that you really can't bring out in public, you know, because their personnel matters.
Not everything is everybody's business.
We also just, uh, discuss disciplinary, um, matters that take place. And we, even when we're doing those, we are, we don't know who the, who the students are. We're just discussing what, um, action was recommended by the district. If board members participated in the disciplinary hearings, they also have the ability to make a recommendation. And then they bring it to the full board for us to decide. So then what we'll do is we'll discuss those in there. So when we go into our open meeting, we just vote on the decision.
Right. Yeah, I've seen that happen. That's pretty much the same way it's been happening. Okay.
One thing for you to feel more comfortable is, I was kind of the same way before I came on a board is, um, you know, the sunshine laws and things like that. Our solicitor is at the meeting and ensuring that we're complying with all laws and, and not, you know, discussing things that we shouldn't be. So, uh, we do have somebody there to kind of really represent. For me, it's the, the public, just to make sure that everything is transparent, that's supposed to be transparent.
Yeah, is that, do you have, I would imagine of your solicitor there who keeps a, a watch on what's going on. Is that the person?
Yep. That's what he just said.
Okay, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing. The volume's just a little bit low on my end and then I have a hearing problem at the top of it. So, sorry about that, Dave. Yeah, Joe, Joe actually did a lot of work on some questions. And the first one, yeah, I'm going to turn it over to you, Joe. You can talk to him about the start of school and as far as the change of schedule and what that was all about.
Yeah, I want to, uh, mention, uh, before I ask you guys any questions here, the return date for back to school date was moved back a week. Okay, I have a grandson who I, I'm involved in his life and I keep track of that stuff. And he got school shop and then the last vacations of the year. So we were able to go a little later this year on our last vacation, uh, moved back from, it was the twenty-sixth of August of twenty twenty-four to September second. And that's kind of a date that's more in line with when I used to go back. Okay? And it is late. It's later than, I just, I jotted this down, Cumberland Valley Mechanicsburg, the nineteenth, uh, East Pensbury Steel High, the twentieth, Camp Hill Middletown, the twenty-first, West Shore, Janelle, I'm sure you're well aware of this, um, the twenty-fifth of August, Tusqueta Township, the twenty-sixth, and then Lower Dolphin shares the nine to the September second date. What was the reason that you guys moved back a week from last year?
Uh, so we have had a lot of issues with, um, schools needing to, uh, dismiss early because of temperatures. Um, we have, at the end of this school year, we had six schools that did not have air conditioning. And we had our, we had created, buildings and grounds had created a plan for how we were going to rectify the problem of getting air conditioning into these buildings. And so this summer we completed two of those. So we still will go back to school with four buildings without air conditioning. And those schools have all had to have early dismissals in the past two years where we're sending them home after lunch because the buildings are just unbearable. The teachers are, you know, drip, everybody's dripping in sweat and kids are needing to have their heads down. And there's really no, no learning possible because of it being so hot. So we thought by holding off a week, it might stave off that like, end of, that end of August heat. And maybe help us keep from having to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's ninety, let's just say ninety-two outside, you know, what is it inside? You know, you get a little bit of that greenhouse effect going with all the glass. And yeah, so I'm, I'm so for that, for movement, even if it's just a couple of degrees that you're able to benefit from, you know, a couple of degrees lower. That's something that's, you know.
So one big thing we hear, I said, one, one big thing we hear is, is, oh, when I was a kid, I didn't have air conditioning.
I don't like, I don't like that at all.
No, it's, it's different nowadays because you can't have the windows and doors open and get that airflow in there, uh, because of safety and security. So it's a, it's a struggle. It's not the same as it was, you know, even at the school, I'm, when I'm like forty-four years old. Yeah, I didn't have it. It wasn't a big deal. You turned the lights down, had the windows and a fan and put your heads down for a little bit. Can't do that these days. It's, it's just too hot in there. The buildings don't get a chance to cool down at night because it's so hot in that summertime. So that extra week, you know, hopefully will alleviate that issue.
Plus, aren't we supposed to be trying to improve upon? Plus aren't we supposed to be trying to improve upon the, the things that we had to deal with when we were younger? I, I would think so. So that's, that's for another, another day, another show.
You went to tour middle or Mountain View last year. And what did you say it was upstairs when you were there?
So they brought in a, a, like one of those hand thermometers and it said over a hundred. That's not technically the air temperature that was kind of the desk, but it was still hot. So this actually kind of started with feedback from actually, I think she is the, the head of the PTA there and made a post on social media and said, hey, you guys need to get in there. And I said, we want, we went in there, checked it out. I lived pretty close there and said, hey, we got to figure something out. And that kind of sparked the whole thing is we all got together and said, what can we do? And so we, we put a plan together and tried to get air conditioning out of buildings. Obviously it's, it's very expensive. So one building, it, you would think it's pretty cheap. And people were like, oh, just get some window units. So we have 44% of those classrooms do have window units, but it's just too much power on, we can't get expand past that. So each building is around $13 million to do because not only is the air conditioning, it's the, you know, the, the heat, it's you got to put in ductwork, you get to redo the lights, the wires, then you're doing the flooring and the painting. And it's just like, you're kind of doing a renovation when you do these projects. And that's why it's so expensive. So if I could do it, all of them tomorrow, you know, I think everybody in the board would agree. It's just financially, we have to kind of space this out over time. So we can make sure we can afford those.
Well, you can have, you can have my tax dollars. I'm not kicking and screaming about that for sure.
No, you had, you're, so you're down the four buildings now. What, what does the plan call for when those four will get done? How many, how many years out before that's done?
So we, we did approve on the board as we're reviewing two schools right now. EH Phillips and Paxtonia, we're, we're looking at right now. And so what we do is we, we contract with the company who looks at it, does the, the whole plan, see what those are going to cost. And then sometime early next year, we'll be voting on, to move those two forward. And then hopefully depending on how things go with the funding and if they have some certain charter school reform, which we can talk about, um, and get some more funds back, get some more funds back to us. Um, then we can do the next two, the final two at the end. So we are, you know, the year after that, that's the plan. And, uh, you know, it's a, it's a great plan. We'll see how it goes with the funding.
Yeah. I can tell you guys care. I mean, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. And I've talked to Genie about this and, and there's no magic wand. It costs money. It takes time and, but we're moving forward and that's what's most important at this point. Bill, want to move on to another topic?
Oh yeah. I think Dave has a good segue here into the, the charter schools. I mean, I, I've worked for a company that monitors state government affairs, provides a lot of information for people that are directly involved with state government. And charter school thing has been around forever. They don't seem to be able to get to a resolution. Maybe someone here can, can shed some light on where things are at. And if there, you see any light at the end of the tunnel where something would change.
Who's the charter school person of the three?
I would just say Eric did speak at our last board meeting and reminded us that we're now up to, I think he said 19 million. Am I right, guys? As far as what we're paying for charter school tuition. So that's just a staggering number, you know, for our district. And, um, and I was hopeful that we would see some movement this budget, you know, season because they did the audit, you know? And, and they audited that situation. And usually sometimes when an audit happens, you know, you get a little action and something changes, but we're all still waiting, you know, with bated breath to see how this budget shakes out.
Yeah. If you, if you didn't see it, the Penn Live had a two-part series on charter schools just this past week.
That's what I was going to just ask a question about, Bill. And now it turns back. It's mind blowing to me that it costs more to educate a student online, a cyber charter school student than it is a public school student who's walking around in a brick and mortar building, going from classroom to classroom, teacher to teacher. How is that? Can any, does anybody know? I mean, I, I kind of feel like I'm bright enough that I could usually try to, or get, put that together, but that's mind blowing. How could that be?
Janelle, do you want to take that one?
Again, it doesn't really, it, it, it doesn't make any sense. Um, like I don't think any of us on the board have a problem with the student getting the education that they, you know, that works for them. But the problem is, is, you know, Central Dolphin has a very strong cyber program. And I, I almost feel as if, if a school district offers a strong program, then that should be where the money goes. And if you choose to go outside of that, you, you get a lower, a lesser amount because we have, we have a really good program. But I think the biggest issue we, and we're seeing it is there's kids going into cyber and are getting identified with IEPs. And when you have an IEP in cyber, you're getting, they call, you get even more money. So like, I think the rate is like 12,000 for a, a student without an IEP. And when they get the IEP, it goes between 18 and $22,000 for that IEP. And I, and we saw that report come out on the student that, that was from, I think CCA that passed away, that hadn't had any check-in, that the teacher didn't have any check-in on whether or not the student was even alive. And it just seems to me that like, that like, how did that fall through the cracks? Like even when I was teaching virtually from home, I still made contact with my kids every day.
Okay.
So I, I.
And this is one of the, another issue is that, you know, everybody kind of has their own opinion. I'm, I'm for school choice. Uh, you know, I think it's great. It's just going to be, it's going to be a fair formula. Uh, because that, you know, that if you look at the IEP rate at some of these schools on, you know, their charter and cyber, they're so much higher than the standard kind of a school. And maybe that's a reason why they're going there. And that's fine. But the funding is so off and the standards are off. And, you know, we have to, you know, we have all these different things. We have the student activities that we have to pay for and we have to bus all students. So if you go to Trinity, uh, because we have such a big geographic district, students can live, you know, where I'm at in West Hanover, we have to bus them to Trinity over in Camp Hill. So we're responsible for things like that, that are just, they're really, really tough to, to, people don't understand. There's a lot of things that we have to pay for. Most of our costs that we have are really fixed costs. We have our salaries and our buildings and our transportation. And then we're like, hey, I don't have a lot of other money. It's not like we're just spending money on random things like some, some charter schools or cyber schools, you know, Eagles tickets, things like that. We can't do those kinds of things. So just put us on the same playing field and make the funding fair for everybody. And I support them. And you know, there, there's some great results there. I know some great teachers there. Um, you know, and a lot of students, some of my, my son's friends go there and they have a great experience. So I have nothing bad to say kind of about the, the process. It's, it's the funding and the fairness. Put us all in the same field. Let us compete for those students. And my, this is again, my opinion. And I think we'll win because I think that in person and we have a great district and it, you learn so much that way. And that's my strong opinion. But if not, if someone chooses differently, let's just make sure the founding is right.
Yeah, it's, it's frustrating because I mean, in a way we're going through a situation here locally that involves Penn Dot. And you get, you get Penn Dot to move. There's all kinds of things you got to do to get their attention. So then you get into the school scenario. And this, I know this issue has been around for a long, long time. All kinds of evidence, we didn't even talk about academic performance of, of these schools. And, and, and the legislature can't get their act together. So, um, there's, there's one columnist in town, John Bear, who used to write for the Philadelphia Daily News. It's always on the rear end of the legislature about how there's, they just don't get stuff done. I mean, now they can't get the budget done. So you guys have a lot, a lot of things to climb over to get action on that. But that, I think we're going to have to come together as a community and just make some more noise somehow. I, I, I'm sure there's some advocacy groups out there working on it. So I don't think we're going to solve that issue tonight.
Not, not tonight. Not tonight, Bill.
The good news I could tell you, you know, locally, you know, we've met with some of our representatives, Representative Fleming, um, you know, Joe Kerwin, they've sat down and we explained some things and they have different opinions on what it was, but they've been willing to listen. We kind of explained our process and they did sit down and listen to us. And so I am happy to, to say that, you know, everybody and Senator Kim, I keep calling her representative, but I know Senator Kim now has, you know, they're all listening and we explain kind of what we need. So I do love that they, the group that's here locally is doing a really good job of listening. Uh, we'll see what happens with the budget. Uh, we can't be late on our budget and we had to pass ours before the state budget. So they're what, six weeks late now? So it'd be great if they could get together and be adults in a room and understand that, you know, what they do impacts everyday Pennsylvanians, but specifically the schools as well. And figure it out and get in a room, you know, don't leave until you get it done. And I mean, that, that's the way that things should get done. But unfortunately at that level of government, uh, you know, we can't expect that.
No.
Yeah. All right. You'll have to read John Bear's article. I think he mentions in there, if they don't get the budget done, they don't get paid. That was one of his proposals. So.
Yeah. He like, he likes to shake things up a little bit, Mr. Bear. Yeah. That's, that's kind of what his role.
He's a former boxer, Joe.
Oh, I didn't know that. I knew he liked to shake things up. I didn't know about that much. Okay. So Bill, let's move on to, I'm going to give you some options here. You want to talk about the thousand new homes and how that's going to?
Yeah, we can.
Eventually. Cause I know that you're into that whole, um, that whole topic anyway, uh, even outside of a, a, a school district news. So, um, the, these new homes are going to be out, I guess, between Wenrick and, or out near Pike Town Road, near the high school, right?
Yeah. It's between, between the village of Linglestown and Pike Town Road where, where the school, the high school's at. And I, it was a couple of weeks ago, one of the supervisors who, uh, keeps track of things and is trying to, trying to shake things up a little bit. She apparently got information that the, the, a formal plan submission is going to be coming shortly, uh, for about 700 homes or more. You know, it's going to take a while to get that through.
So not a thousand then, right? That was just a number.
Ultimately a thousand is what I'm hearing.
Okay. All right.
Actually, actually we're hearing even higher, but.
Yeah. The numbers are all over the place. So there's been no formal plan, but that's apparently coming and then we'll have a better idea. But at the board level, what kind of discussion do you have when you know that that's out there simmering and it's going to, it's going to be here sooner or later?
You'll know where they go to school. It's going to be, um, West Hanover, Linglestown and Central Dolphin, right?
Maybe West Hanover. Actually it's, so I'm, I, this is a little bit of my wheelhouse because I'm the buildings and ground. So we, we have an outside firm that we work with called McKissick and Associates. And, um, so we're doing a plan and we're kind of showing that what's our capacity, what are futures? So part of this, we are reviewing all of the building. I, I wish that was it. There's a lot more coming specifically in West Hanover. That, that those students will go to Linglestown Elementary, Middle and then Central Dolphin. So, so it could be, it could be a thousand. It could be up to 3,000 because they do multiple families. So we, we're, we're well aware of that. And I'm personally, I'm terrified that there's a big concern going on. It's, uh, you know, it's some things that I wake up in the middle of the night thinking about these kinds of things and send emails and some different ideas we have. So we have a lot of different ideas. What, what we have today building wise, there's no way we can handle that. Um, so we, we've met with some of the supervisors, asked, asked for maybe impact fees. Um, they can go there. They can help us. I don't think we're going to get those. Um, the, the big thing is actually there's a meeting right now with West Hanover that I couldn't attend because of this, but there was one a couple of weeks ago, is we're asking them to stop approving these variances. These are people's lands and I can't, you can't do anything about them. It's, you know, this is a free country. It's America. And if the developer is going to put something in, that's fine. But what we're seeing is they keep adding these variances. So like, there was one in West Hanover just approved where the first floor is supposed to be commercial, second story apartments, second story apartments, and everything was fine. Okay. We got that. Then they approve and say, hey, they're all apartments. And so they just keep adding and changing and they're going against their own codes and against their own regulations, just because they, you know, they want to get things approved. And so these supervisors have to realize the impact that they have on the schools. And then I feel like that's not being heard. And, um, you know, I know West Hanover, you know, there's a lot of change going on, uh, and their supervisors and, and they've been really receptive. Laura Paxton, you know, is kind of a mess right now with a lot of changes and a lot of new people on there. So when that new, that election comes, we're going to be meeting with them hard and saying, you can't, you have to stop this because we just won't have the room at the time is we have a lot of buildings at capacity. You know, if you, I don't know if we want to talk about the kindergarten center, but we, you know, we got creative as a board and said, hey, what could we do? And, um, what, we did a survey of all of our residents said, hey, what's the, what are the three things kind of you want with the district? And we were all kind of shocked to say, hey, full day kindergarten was really, really important to everybody. And you know, I know my son, you know, my children, I was lucky to be able to say, hey, I go here and then I had them go to a half day somewhere else. I was able to afford that. Not everybody can do that. And not everybody, I work from home. So does my, so does my wife. And people work. So we're like, hey, this is a great thing. We know that when students have that full education at kindergarten, they're up, they're, they're a foot ahead and then they're going to continue that on. And we see that with the test scores and we see West Hanover get a blue ribbon award for that because a lot of those kids are going to another kindergarten there. So we want to give that opportunity for everybody. So I know I'm, I don't want to speak for everybody, but you know, I'm about equal opportunity for all of our students. You got to earn it from there. We'll give you the chance. We're not going to say, hey, you get this, you this, and you get that. You know, at least me, I strongly feel that way. We'll give you opportunity. You go earn it. And so we thought we, hey, we can do all day kindergarten. At the same time, we're going to take those kids out of the building and put those in kindergarten centers and give some breathing room. You know, North Side is busting at the seams. And so that change is going to really open up, um, that, that school where they're going to have some breathing room a little bit. And as we do that, maybe renovation, we can maybe get creative and look at some other spaces to, to make sure we can build in capacity for the future.
So there is a little bit of, that was a separate topic we had written down. There is, there is some overcrowding issues, either current or there's anticipation of some, right?
2030, uh, if we didn't do the kindergarten centers, I think it was going to be like 80% of our schools will be over capacity.
That's not good. That's not good.
That's a huge change. Um, we saw some issues with some of the middle schools. We're trying to figure that out and try to be creative. The high schools, there's not a lot of things you can do. Um, it's kind of a, a hard topic to talk about in the community is, is a redistricting. The problem is every school was almost out of capacity. Well, I think we have, you know, two schools that are kind of okay, but it doesn't matter what you do. You can't just move somebody over here. Um, you know, we, we've had this, these lines for 20 years and I'm, I'm a strong believer. Hey, people live in the communities they kind of want to live in. But even if we wanted to change it, it wouldn't matter because then the other schools is going to be over capacity. So there's, there's no options on that. That doesn't really make any sense. You know, on a, if you look at the math equation, that doesn't even make any sense anyway. So for me, I, you know, that's, that's not something we're, we're looking at, uh, at least I'm not looking at. It's how other ways can we get creative? You know, we're, we're looking at options in the high school. Like maybe there's some work programs in there. And so we, we're working with a few outside companies to give some students some opportunities that they can maybe get an apprentice shift. They can do different jobs. And, you know, we can redesign the curriculum in the high school where, hey, you don't have to be there for the full time. If, hey, I want to go in, in this field and I want to be in the trades. Hey, we're going to give you some chance to go do some things, get some real world experience and get a great education at the same time. And they'll kind of give us some room. So I think that's, that's next on the horizon for us. And, uh, we have to vote for it and, and get that all approved. And so I don't know if everybody's going to, going to go that way, but that's my personal vision, uh, that I think that we should go and that will really help things.
So there's a lot, a lot going on right now with that.
I can, I can, I'm, I'm sort of trying to go that way, Dave, in that with, uh, Linglestown Gazette that I've, for the fourth time trying to do, I, I was in contact with the high school principal. Wanting to see if we, if we get students involved in, in local journalism. For example, I don't have anyone to cover the school board. I'm, I'm looking at the township myself and there's no way I can split myself. In fact, you're, I guess you're moving your meetings to Tuesday or something like that.
Yeah. Yesterday was the first one.
Which is the same night as the township meetings.
Yeah. So I'm hoping that, that maybe covering the school board can be a class project where they, they trade off. Everyone gets at least one chance to go to a meeting and try and file a report or, or at least notes or something. So I, I got past the principal. Now I have to, have to be in touch with the teachers. We'll see how that works out. But I had a question with, with, with the, um, you were talking about the supervisors at townships with the variances. How do, do you, are you more, is the board more active or someone within the district more active in monitoring the townships that, that are into the development that's, to work with them directly to find out what they're doing and to maybe throw up some roadblocks when they don't follow their zoning laws and development laws?
Yeah, we, we've done it as a board. We've, we've gone to Swetera, we've gone to different areas. So we've used our regions and our expertise and
Okay.
We have a really good trust with the board right now. So we have different people. Hey, I'm going to go here. I'm going to talk to them. And so we've set up meetings with all the different townships and all the different people and said, hey, let, let's stay coordinated. And then we kind of report back on, you know, hey, this is what we're hearing and this is what they said and people understand. So some more receptive than others, but we, uh, we're pushing and a lot of us, since we live in the community, we know a lot of these people. So we're, we're trying to stress how, how important it is that they consider the schools and decisions they make. It's not just about getting extra tax revenue. So they don't have to raise their taxes. They have to understand the impact of, of, of their decisions has on a lot of different other people.
Good.
And what?
Go ahead, Lauren. You want to add?
Eric Epstein and Kristen Hamford and I met at Laura Paxton. Um, it was before the supervisors changed, but one of the things that we talked to them about is isn't it interesting that we spend, uh, we have corporations spending money on traffic impact studies and things like that. It's like, why aren't we looking at educational impact? You know?
Right.
Like when we're looking at these big developments, we really need to kind of consider that, um, and just kind of encouraging them to, to communicate with the school districts, um, and, and keeping, everybody, keeping each other in the loop, you know, I think would really make a huge difference.
You should be able to, um, be proactive rather than reactive. You shouldn't have to make decisions on your heels. You know, and that, that's kind of what Dave was touching on, you know, you know, let us know what's going on so we can plan for it. Don't keep making changes without letting us know. And it, it's a big enough undertaking already without having to kind of figure out, you know, what are they, what are they not telling us? Um, or I'm, I'm sure some of it's, uh, open to speculation. You don't know everything, but, uh, everything that is known should be passed along to the board and you guys, it's only fair.
Vice versa.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah. The other thing that caught my ear that you said, Dave, was about, um, having, having the developers pay fees that would go to the school district. And I have, actually have a high school classmate who is in Dillsburg and they're under a lot of development pressure as well. And his idea was to bake, bake these fees for school districts into the state law. My understanding is now. My understanding is now it's a negotiated thing. It's, there's no, no hammer, no, no state law allows you to put these fees in for the schools, but you can negotiate with them. Is that, is that your understanding?
That, that's, that's what we've been hearing. Uh, you know, I'm not, I don't have that officially anything. That's what the, basically all the supervisor said. And I don't, I don't feel like we're going to get anything unless we get the legislators, uh, to pass something like that. And based on what was going on lately, I don't, uh, have any confidence they'll pass anything that's, uh, impactful. Cause they can't figure out how to be adults and get things done for the, the Commonwealth.
Yeah. Well, as I, as I'm reclosing in on a timeframe where I may step away from employment and do other stuff. More and more, it's the advocacy type things, like what you're talking about, you know, picking an issue and trying to make it happen and work with the appropriate people. It's becoming more interesting to me, especially as Joe and I go around the community and talk to, uh, different groups. So we'll see what happens. Maybe I have another career in that. How many careers do I, can I have, Joe?
I would, one day at a time, Bill. I focus, focus on whatever's right in front of you now. So, uh, let me jump in here and this is kind of an issue that, and I, I, I don't want to use the term warm, warned, but I, I let, I made, uh, the, uh, board members aware that we were going to touch on this. The paraprofessionals issue and I, Lauren, you and I spoke briefly about it and I think you articulated it very well. Uh, I believe there were 37 total paraprofessionals and there was some, some shuffling or some, some paraprofessionals that were asked to be reassigned, I guess. And that's exactly what it was. Um, where are we now with that? Because I know that was a, I, I told you guys that we were going to try to ask the questions that the people want to know. And I'm sure they do. Where, where are we at with the paraprofessional? First of all, paraprofessionals are classroom assistants. They assist the teachers. Uh, explain what a paraprofessional is and where we are with that right now.
A paraprofessional assists in the classroom, uh, with the students and making the teacher's job a little bit, uh, more doable. When they have so many different levels of ability, uh, inside the room. And, um, they are not highly paid individuals in Central Dolphin. You, really, if you go into being a paraprofessional, you're part, a lot of the big value is the benefits. You know, the salary is not fantastic, but the benefits are, are quite good. So, but it's a hard job. Uh, and I think one of the tough things about this situation was we have to deal with the children that come into us and try to meet their needs. And, and there are laws about, you know, how many kids can be in autistic classroom, things like that, you know? And so we have to shuffle to meet their needs, but a paraprofessional might have joined us to take care of an emotionally disturbed child. And now we're moving them into an autism classroom. That's, that's tough, you know?
Sounds very challenging.
Right? And, uh, that's not for everybody. So that's a really, that's a tough shuffle and it's something that you have to really, you know, I, I think our administration has to do a great job at communicating, offer training. Um, offer the ability to kind of make those shifts, um, as comfortable as possible. And there are going to be people that it's just not a good fit. Um, but we do have to handle, you know, the children that, that are coming to us and, and make those changes, you know, and that rebalancing that has to happen. Um, Dave, I don't know. Do you know what we're down to? I thought almost everybody was replaced, uh, like shuffled, save out of that 30, it was like four or five that were still kind of in.
I think we're 17 autism pair, autistic paraprofessionals short to start the year.
Yeah, right.
So autism classrooms are typically an eight to one, so eight students in a room for one teacher. And they normally have at least four paraprofessionals in the room, sometimes even more. And here's a, a statistic. I mean, Dave's the numbers guy, but in two, in 2020, we had eight autism classrooms. We are sitting at 28 to start this school. So.
Yeah, that's been a big, that's a big issue on the capacity is because instead of having 24 kids in the classroom, you're going to have eight. And so it just kind of filled up our space in that. But the one thing I did want to mention is, is on that, on the, the hot topic is that there was some change in the structure. And, um, you know, that, there was a lot of communication kind of of what it was, but I think everything didn't communicate at the end the way it should have. And I think there were some lessons learned and our superintendent is, is, was, made a couple of adjustments on there. But we're having certified teachers in some of these areas and they're going to have some, some of our paraprofessionals to help. So it was just a different, a little bit of a different structure. And, you know, as a board, we'll, we'll hold the administration accountable if this new, uh, program doesn't work and we'll figure out what's, what's best. And so we, uh, I think we do a good job of trying to hold them accountable and we listen to the feedback. I probably got more calls on this than I got on any, you know, any topic that we've had kind of in the last couple of years. And, uh, we expressed that feedback, uh, to our superintendent because that was our constituents and there was some changes made and some, some adjustments to that. And we'll continue to monitor that. I can tell you that is that, uh, if we turns out that this was a bad decision and, um, you know, I'm always a trust person, but you got to verify and make sure the results are there. So we'll, we will find out kind of how that works, but I do, I do have a lot of confidence in our administration. You know, they've done a good job of kind of revamping a lot of stuff. We've had a lot of sins in the past and doing things kind of old ways. And sometimes these new ways people don't feel as comfortable with, uh, but I do a hundred percent, uh, back them. And I think that they're on the right direction of where we need to be with all the challenges that we have. Cause we also have a lot of our, you know, it's called EL students, so English language learner, second language. We have a lot of those. And so some of these schools are approaching half of the school is that. So, yeah, we need a lot of additional resources there as well. So we're just trying to balance the, the resources and give our teachers as much resource and support they can, uh, because this is very, you know, challenging times, uh, you know, as they have a lot of different things going on.
Yeah, you already mentioned earlier that, uh, the, it, students in poverty have increased 20%. Now the, um, special needs has increased exponentially. So there's a lot on you guys' plates and on the administration's plates, on everybody's plates. I mean, it's so much different than, than when we all went to school, you know? And, uh, there were issues back then, but it was an entirely different set of issues and probably ones that were a little bit easier, more simple to, to kind of deal with.
Yeah, I can give you an example. My, uh, my granddaughter who lives, lives with, uh, me and my wife. She's going to go to, uh, Linglestown Elementary and she's into an autistic, uh, room. And I think there's eight students, like you said, and I think there's two, I don't, I don't know if it's a teacher and eight, I don't know the combination, but there's going to be two, two people there with those eight. And, um, my granddaughter is going to the Vista School now. It's a specialized school, early intervention program. And I know in that setting, um, there's usually three or four people that work with her a day. So I mean, it's going to be a little bit of a change there, but, uh, at least they have two and that, that's, that's good to know.
So I have, uh, two more topics written. I actually came up with one since the beginning of this show here and I want to, uh, direct this one to Janelle. Talk a little bit, just how about an elevator pitch, even an extended elevator pitch on VOTEC? You know, that's something that I think needs to get a little more attention and, and when, uh, when, when Jean was, Jeannie was on, um, she talked about it with pride. And, uh, you know, people need to know that, you know, and I don't want to get into it too much because I just asked you to talk about it. But there are other options than traditional, this is what you do to go to college. What's going on over at VOTEC right now?
So I grew up in the area and graduated from Susquehanna Township. So Dolphin County VOTEC was one of the options. We got into eighth grade, we got, went to Torrit and it really was one of those like, you're not college bound, you're not college material. You're going to go to VOTEC. And it what, like at that time, that was it. That was your option. You were either going to college or you were going into the workforce. Which again, I, there's nothing wrong with that. And I think that VOTEC has become so much more, um, than what it was. Like it, what they are doing over there, it, it blows me away. Um, we just had, I believe we had three, three or four of the computer networking students that are in their program, the program there. Graduated with their associate's degrees from Hack before they even graduated from VOTEC.
That's great.
They're, they're, they're coming out of school with an associate's degree and their, their, um.
Wow.
Correct call or high school diploma. Um, we had, they have the options they have for co-ops. Just, we have businesses all over the area that want, are welcoming these students in with open arms and they're making money. They're coming out of there with certifications. Um, my son is in the diesel, uh, diesel technology program. And their work, like he already in ninth grade was working on semi trucks last year. Like the experiences that, and he, like talking tools and talking parts, like he, he has his own little landscaping business with my, with my older son. And he's fixed all the machines all summer because he learned how to do that stuff in ninth grade. And we, I, I heard you mention that you're going to have Jason Civitello on.
Yes, we are.
Are hired him as our director in, in December. Um, he is just amazing. Just doing so much with the, with the staff over there, just builds them up. It's positivity. We just hired the assistant, a new assistant director and she was actually the, the culinary, uh, culinary instructor. And so we just hired her and again, just, it's just positive positivity. And the kids just, you know, they're, they're getting awards, they're going to do present, they're going to do presentations places and getting their, you know, names out there in public. And it's, it's just so awesome to see. Um, one of the things I did hear about last night that I will put a little pitch in for is in November, they're having a Veterans Day breakfast at, at VOTEC. I believe it's actually on Veterans Day and, um, Scott Perry is going to attend, Senator Kim. Um, I'm under the impression that Dave McCormick is going to be there as well as, um, John Fetterman. I believe that, you know, Justin Fleming will be there and probably Dave Madsen. So it's going to be a lot of the local, um, representatives, but also some of our, uh, state representatives and state senators. To honor the veterans. Um, I'm sure there's going to be more information coming out about it, but like, just everything they're doing over there is just absolutely amazing. And I mean, I was, I was sold on it before my son even got in last year at ninth grade. And now I get to see it firsthand, like what they're accomplishing and it's just awesome.
Exciting times for Dolphin County VOTEC, that's for sure. And we're, we're excited to have, uh, Jason Civitello join us here in a couple of weeks. And I, I have one more question and then Bill, if you have anything else after this, and I'm going to direct this to Lauren Silvers. The district purchased three buildings, what, a year and a half ago, year to a year and a half ago, somewhere around there. Three buildings for $9.4 million, 4251 Crumbs Mill Road, 4031 Executive Park Drive, 75 South House Road, which I could almost hit a three wood. Two, from where I, from where I live. It's the old township building, two township buildings ago. And then if you want to throw in the current admin building, because there's going to be some changes there, major overhaul, there's four buildings. I like, I think these are great buildings. They're not absolutely turnkey, but no buildings are that you buy typically. But I think that you guys got a great, you know, hit the ground running with some really nice buildings. And, uh, talk about what these four buildings, the end game, uh, that, what do you, they're going to be used for, Lauren?
Well, just, um, uh, last night we had our, 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 sorry, Tuesday evening, we had our first meeting in, um, the new administration building on House Road. So that was a, a new experience for all of us. Uh, it's amazing how they've been able to upgrade, you know, get the security. Well, really, you know, with that being a police station for a while, the vestibules were already there. It's like you said, I think we, we made really smart purchases because so much of the infrastructure matched up quite well with, you know, the uses that, that we needed.
Very pretty and modern looking too.
Yeah, yeah. And the parking is very adequate.
Yeah. Was your, was your meeting in the old, uh, supervisors' meeting room? Is that where they used to hold township meetings? Do you know?
She might not know that, Bill.
Okay. Was, did they have like a, a elevated stage a little bit with, with a, a long desk and all that?
I think, I think she's frozen.
Okay.
No, 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 we, we kind of revamped and made it, made a bigger room because you kind of need good sized space. So, um, I think it's still a little bit of a work in progress.
Oh, she's back. You had, you were frozen with a nice smile on your face. Bill said, yeah, it was a.
Okay, I was just interested. I, I can remember going to meetings in that, that building.
So that's exciting. We're, we're heading in the right direction. We're getting closer to, when, when are you guys going to take over there as the admin building for the district?
They have in May.
Oh, they already did?
Yeah, we were told that the first time we met with, yeah.
So, so one other cool thing with that is Lawrence frozen again. Um, so we. Alright, so we, we have most of our staff moved over. There's a couple, a few, few places that still need to kind of come over there, but we're, we are going to kind of have like a welcome center downstairs. So, you know, we, we, as you probably all know, is, is, you know, we're a really attractive area for the Nepali community coming in. And so, um, you know, we have a lot of other different cultures that are coming in. So, you know, we have so many different, um, cultures here. So we want to have kind of a welcome center and the community be able to do that and make sure that when somebody comes into the community, we're going to welcome them. We're going to, we have, uh, we're working with, um, a, a local healthcare company. I don't know if we can officially announce that. I don't think that's officially signed, but making sure people have insurance and, you know, eye doctors and dentists and, and other doctors and other resources. And here's how to, you know, do different things in the community. Here's how to get your child registered for school. So we have this whole program and this vision of, of that welcome center. And really they bring them into the community quickly and make sure that we have great communication. Cause sometimes when the parents come, maybe they don't even speak English, but only the child does. So, and sometimes it's, it's nobody. But we want to make sure that everybody understands how to communicate, how to ask questions, how to be part of the child's education. So we think this center is going to be a really, really good way to do that. So.
That is so exciting and so progressive. Yeah, that's, that's wonderful.
And then with the other building, so the admin is going to be redone. So everything's starting in, um, it's hopefully in October, we're going to have some demolition, we have some bids out there. So we're going to turn that into kindergarten center. That's, that, that one is probably the, one of the more challenging ones. There's a few different things we have to do because we have to move our print shop and some loading docks and stuff.
Hey, Dave.
Yep.
I have one question on that, on that admin building. I was in the company of some former, uh, CD employees and they were concerned that there wasn't going to be any room to put a playground in there. Is that, do you have any idea what that's all about? At the admin building?
Oh, uh, no, we, we have a plan for that. So we, um, we, we, we've done some public meetings and shown some of the plans that we have with McKissick's. So there is going to be some space kind of in that back by that parking lot. So yes, we will have a playground in all those schools.
I'll let them know.
Yeah. The ASPI building is a little bit challenged because of the grade, because it's like a really high, steep, um, things we had to do some work there and, um, some site work on there. But that's going to be a really, really great building. I'm excited about that one. It's got three floors. There's a lot of great things we're going to do there. Um, and the Crumbs Mill one, that was a kind of a no brainer one. That's super easy, especially with all the north side overcapacity there, over there. That's going to be probably our easier one of the buildings that we have.
They're, they're kind of spread out nicely in a big triangle and it, maybe even a square, if you include the Rutherford Road, the, the ex-admin building, you know?
And we also have the, we owned a building, we purchased one for our cyber building, we moved those over to the admin. And so that is all going to be there for Paxtonia students. That's the kindergarten center. So that's on Mountain Road there. Um, so that one's kind of, it was already ready to go almost because we did a lot of work and we did it with the cyber building. So those are, uh, what we have today and there could be more in the future. Um, you know, I think we were progressive and thinking outside the box. Building a new elementary school, you're, you're looking at 50 million, uh, middle school, at least 100, probably 120 and a new high school, probably 250. So we don't, we don't have those funds. Um, there's nothing we can do about those. We even looked at some expansions of the buildings and like, hey, that expansion of like 10 classrooms is a hundred million dollars. And my jaw hit the floor. I couldn't believe what it's going to cost, but with all the new, the codes, you're going to do all kinds of stuff when you do those. So we said, hey, let's do something creative. And so we, we started looking at the office buildings and said, hey, there's some commercial real estate is, is not so hot. This is a great time to get some great buy, get, get structures with great bones in there, make sure we can do security and busing and, and all those different things. And so we thought outside the box and I think you said, uh, there was a township, uh, was on previously, they just, uh, went with that model as well. And, and they purchased the building for the same kind of thing. So I think that might be the new ways that schools are looking at things is let's get office buildings. It's a lot cheaper than building because it's, you had to build something with the water and the, the retention ponds and things like that. I mean, it's just, you're spending 50 million for a building.
That's all very exciting to me. Lauren, welcome back.
Sorry about that. Technical difficulties.
I think, and, and Janelle wanted to, uh, chime in. Do you still want to chime in? Do you still have something that you want to add to that?
I don't know. My dog decided to just pick up a water bottle and start chewing on it. So I'm.
So that's why you had your hand.
Yeah, I was trying to, I was trying to get the water bottle to go away.
I, I did come up with a final, a final question. I think a great way to wrap this session up.
Okay.
And that is, um, I'm, I'm really big into public service. Um, and I go, especially higher level, uh, higher level politicians, elected officials. You get frustrated because it looks like they're, they're more about retaining their job and doing all those kinds of things. But at the level you're at, it is pure public service. And what I wanted to find out, if you would just say a sentence or two about what kind of return you get. You don't, obviously you don't get financial return, but you're obviously taking on a big job in our community. We've already heard tonight about how complex each one of these issues are. So it's not a little job, it's a big job. And what kind of return do you get personally from putting yourself out there and doing this? What, what are you, what's happening with each of you on that?
And that's start with the now unfrozen Lauren Silvers?
I will say before I. Before I get thrown off, um, you know, when I sit at graduation, I tear up every year when, when you hear those stories of those kids. Some of these kids overcome amazing adversity, like they just, they tackle things at an age that I, I can't even imagine what they've overcome. You know, at the age of 17 and 18 and you're standing there, you know, in front of us and, and just all that they've managed to do, all the things that our sports teams have managed to do. I mean, we have just had incredible, you know, uh, success in, in so many different categories. And, and for me, that is just such a reward to see our kids be successful and to, to be able to get into amazing higher. get into amazing higher ed and great careers and military. It's all, and I always tear up at that too. I'm a crier sometimes. But like, all those kids going into the military, you know, and dedicating their lives to that is just, it's, it's incredible to see. I'm just really proud of our kids.
Shout out C, CD softball.
Yeah, right? Incredible.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think Miss Coach Mack for CD Rams football, he's, he's an amazing guy for helping kids out. So, yeah, we have a lot of good things going on.
We just found out, um, at our board meeting that a UA baseball team was going right, Dave, to like the World Series equivalent of like, um, you know, under eight baseball. And it's just like, just amazing that we have kids so successful.
They're, they're there right now. So, yeah, the Central Dolphin, uh, baseball association, they, they're part of Ripkin, uh, which is different with like Lingustown. They do the, uh, they actually do the ones like on TV, the little like World Series, but the, they won districts, they won states, and now they, uh, they qualified right first, uh, I think you're in cherry here in Jersey this weekend. And so, uh, we've had actually a few teams win states from Central Dolphin baseball. It's technically not affiliated with the school, but it's, uh, it's our kids that are going to be coming up through there. And, um, and it's, I'm super excited because we've had a lot of success and we haven't, uh, we've had some teams go to the World Series. We haven't anybody win. So I'm hoping this, uh, this team, actually one of my neighbors lives two houses down, shout out to Coco. He's, he's a great kid and a bunch of other kids in there. We have, uh, I've, I've coached some of those kids and I know those kids. Uh, I love the, the sports community we have. It's, it's, we have an amazing kind of area of people really doing things the right way, raising great young men, uh, for our area and, and the women too, and the girls. The girls are awesome too.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna jump in there. I, I cover, I cover high school sports for Lily. I love girl sports. Okay. So we have to always mention the girls because they're, they're awesome too. Yeah. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah. Dave, why don't you finish up about what, what kind of return you get on, uh, your investment with the school board?
Yeah, I, for me, it's just, it's always about the kids and just making sure they have the opportunity. I, I see a lot of stuff and you, I try to stay off social media as much as I can. Um, there's a lot of negativity out there in the world, but I think we, I think we have a great country. They have a great area. I think this generation is, is primed for a lot of success despite a lot of the challenges that are out there. And, uh, the technology is out there and AI and, you know, I'm doing AI projects all the time in my work. And you know, there's some things here that enhance us and there's a lot of chance for success. And, uh, we have a lot of challenges and we need good people out there. And so for me, I feel really great of doing at least my part and, uh, hopefully I can motivate our state and, you know, our, our federal legislators to like get things done. And it's about the future. It's about our community. And, uh, you know, we need more good people inside of politics as now they're trying to get rich off of politics and, you know, everything's a fight about every little thing. I'm like, hey, you know, it's fun to talk about politics and things like that. But at the end of the day, we're all the same people. We're all here together and, uh, let's make a great place for, for, for all of our Americans.
Wonderful. Thanks, Dave. Bill, we're going to bring Janelle in?
Yep.
All right. So, um, one of my favorite things every year is in January, it's board member, board director appreciation month. And we'll show up to the first meeting of the month, the second meeting sometimes, and we'll have cards, notes, posters, all kinds of things made from the different elementary schools thanking us for all that we do. Um, I think that what happens is the teachers, you know, take that time to explain to their, their classes what the school board is because we're just, you know, a bunch of old people that sit up there and make decisions and they, they don't understand, necessarily understand that. And I'm sorry, I joke about being about the old people thing, but you know, that's the, the viewpoint that was there was it was a bunch of, previously it was a bunch of old people that were on the board making decisions for kids that they don't have in the schools anymore. So it's really cool. We're like, we have a, a bunch of us on the board now that have children still in the schools and some of us are, you know, not so far removed from it either. Um, and the second to that is the other thing I get back is I, I haven't, I haven't been able to do it as much because of being in the class, in the school myself, but we are making these visits to the schools. And we get to see all the amazing things taking place. And, um, the kids run up to us and say, are you like the president? Are you like the prime? You know, it just, it, it's just so cute and it's just so fun. And it's being the great stuff taking place in our schools is, has just been awesome to me. Um, because you know, I grew, I, having my kids in, in Pax Tank, I was strictly involved in the PTO with Pax Tanks. And now being able to go to EH Phillips and see what the kids are doing there. And I got to go to West Hanover and see Adam, amazing new building that the school board was able to, you know, get through and build. And just I, that's what I take from this is just, you know, that Central Dolphin is amazing. And, you know, it's, the negative press has been hard. It's hard on all of us when the negative things come out, um, because we do, we, every, all nine of us and it's the team of ten with our superintendent. We put a lot of heart and a lot of time into what we do. It's not just the, the three or four hours that we're all together on Tuesday night. It's, you know, countless hours other times and it, it hurts when the negative stuff, negative press comes out there because we are trying to do what's right. We're trying to do, you know, what's right for everybody. And like Dave said, like we do have a lot going on and a lot of good stuff. And we, we want the good stuff to make the press and it does it all.
Well, yeah, it, I, and when I go out to the coffee shop here in Lingustown, St. Thomas Roasters, everyone looks to me as being the media. So I, I guess I can speak for the media and that if we are able to get this thing going, I mean, we'll, we'll be there to see the good things. Unfortunately, the way Penn Live works, maybe some of the TV stations are looking for salacious things. So that's what they look for. That, that gets eyes and traditionally local newspapers or local, in these days, websites, that's, that's not what it's all about. So.
We see a lot on the social media. There's some pages out there and you see comments and you read the comments, like I know that's not true. But you don't want to engage, right? So, you know, I have a policy. I just don't, I try not to engage. It's because it, no, no one's going to win at the end of the day. It's just like, that's not true at all. But what are you going to, you're not going to argue with somebody on a, you know, a Facebook comment. So it is a little bit frustrating on that.
Dave, ask Jeannie who always has your back with that stuff. I'm, I'm on there, okay?
I see, I see your comments.
And I, I mean, I'm not really a troll. I'm, I'm on there to, to engage and to, you know, to interact and stuff, but I, I don't like that either, you know? And I'm just a taxpayer with a grandchild that goes to the school, but I'm proud to be, um, to have gone to all Central Dolphin schools and that my grandson's does now, my, my son did. And I think you guys are doing a great job.
Yeah.
You know, you guys aren't, you guys aren't, it's not an ivory tower position. It's street level. If we can call it politics, it is because you're elected, but it's street level stuff. You know, you have your sleeves rolled up. Uh, you knew you had some challenges, um, that you adopted kind of some challenges that there were people in the community, taxpayers that weren't happy with some things. And you, you met these things head on. You go out to the classrooms, you interact with the kids and, and, uh, I, I can say, you know, from one adult to another, that I'm proud of you guys and I'm proud to have you on my school board.
Yeah. Well, after we met with the first group, I, both Joe and I had a good feeling. And now with you three, it just adds on that we do, we have a solid school board. There's no doubt about it. And
Very good.
I want to thank each of you for your public service. Um, do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's what I love about, uh, uh, dude, nevermind.
No, go ahead. No, you go ahead.
I got to say, no, I was just going to say, what, what I do love is like, you know, some of us kind of running against, you know, or, or working with someone, you know, on elections and stuff like that. As soon as all the election was done, everybody's like, hey, let's meet, shake hands, think, hate Thomas Roasters, go there, have a couple of coffee. Hey, what can we do to work together? And like, everybody kind of checked their egos at the door and said, hey, we understand it's, it is a little bit of politics. There's elections and different things going on. Let's do the right thing. And, and the board did that. And, you know, I didn't think that was going to be the case. I really didn't. I was like, man, that was a pretty contentious election in twenty twenty-three. I was like, man, this is going to be a nightmare. And it was like, everybody's been great, uh, you know, just put all their differences aside, all petty, nothing there. It's literally about doing the right things for our kids. And I'm super proud to be part of this board and have, you know, I respect every single person on the board. We have great dialogue where everybody gets to speak and say their thing. And we, we'll go back and forth. We may not agree on things and that's okay. But at the end of the day, we respect each other because we know we're doing things for the right reasons.
That's great.
I just, it took the words out of my mouth. You're in it for the right reasons. I didn't mean to block you there, Dave. I was going to, I was going to kind of use this stuff and let you take us out, but let's just thank our sponsors once again. Um, they are this and that. The podcast is sponsored by American Legion Post two seventy-two. Be a hero, hire a hero, Ricca Bowles Electric and Team PA AAU Basketball. So thanks again to, let me get that out of there so we can look at everybody's faces one more time. Central Dolphins School District Board Members Lauren Silvers, Janelle Bingaman, Dave Dorneman, and for Bill Bostic, I'm Joe Gillaway. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
Good night.
Hold on. Sorry, sorry to hold you hostage for so long, but there was so much to talk about and you guys did a great job.
Yep, thank you.
Have a good evening.